We will, welcome to tonight's April twenty eighth city council meeting if you are capable, able to and would like to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just and eternal.
We're going to start off this evening with a couple of proclamations. The first one is for National Drinking Water Week. I think we have some representatives from our water department if they'd love to come up. Come on, Mr. Beaty, because you're going to introduce them, Mr. Beats. Introduce your crew.
Sure. This is Jimmy Alt House. He's our utility superintendent. Chuck Staples is our municipal utility director and Carson Banks is one of our maintenance workers.
And Mr. Beats is our public works director. So I just want to make sure that you get your name mentioned as well. Whereas, water is our most valuable natural resource and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydrate, and hygiene needs for the quality of our citizens, for our citizens enjoy. It's just a strange word, sorry. And whereas, top water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas, the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. And whereas, the citizens of our city are called upon to help protect our sources, source waters from pollution, practice water conservation, and get involved with their water by familiarizing themselves with it. Now, therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, proclaim the week of May fourth through tenth, twenty twenty-five, as National Drinking Water Week in the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, and ask the residents to join in recognizing Bonner Springs Public Utilities Staff for their dedication to produce and deliver safe, clean drinking water to the citizens of Bonner Springs. Off of the camera. Thank you, everyone. Time to embarrass someone. We're also honoring proclamation for Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Would you like to introduce yourself?
I'm Chris Break, City Clerk. I tried to talk Julie and Chrissy to come in tonight as well, and they both bailed on me, but I want to make sure everybody knows that they do a lot of work for the City Clerk's office, and I couldn't do it without them.
Thank you, Chris. And I will tell you that without Chris there, there's a lot of things that I could not accomplish. She, a lot of people give the mayor a lot of credit, and it really happens right down here at this level. These individuals really watch out for us. Whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government exists throughout the world. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides the professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other, other levels. And whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. Whereas, the Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the Office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their safe provincial, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Professional Clerk. Now, therefore, I, Tom Stevens, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby recognize the week of May fourth through May tenth, twenty twenty-five, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Bonner Springs, and extend appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk staff and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to communities they represent. Okay, we will continue on with tonight's, this evening's meeting with the citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. Again, it's for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Please come forward to the mic. And at the base of it, there's a little button. If you'll push that button, it'll turn green at the base there. And if you, name an address, please.
My name is Megan Moore. My address is five forty-one South One Hundred and Eighteenth Street. First off, I want to say thank you for sending the Rock Quarry special permit back to planning commissions and sending it to neighbors a little further out. Because of that, I'm here tonight. I didn't know anything about it before. So I live right next to the Boy Scout camp, not far from the Rock Quarry. I currently live in the home that I was raised in, the home that my father built nearly thirty years ago. I'm here tonight as a mother, a daughter, a homeowner, a neighbor, and a member of this community. I want, I want, just want to say this isn't about the noise or the inconvenience. This is about the long-term health and safety of, and livability of our community. For years, my family and I have dealt with the consequences of living near this operation, and I can tell you, they are not minor. They are real, personal, and growing. Sorry. I just want to say that besides the obvious of the damage to our homes, I just want you to know that there is... Sorry, let me just find my, I had this all, here it is. "We have seen a significant increase in dust covering our property. Clouds of dust as you drive down the road, dust and gravel piled curb-high, blocking the storm drain inlets, and loose gravel falling from the trucks when leaving the quarry. We've experienced illegal road closures by the Rock Quarry personnel on multiple different occasions. I understand that the business needs to operate, but there must be limits, especially when the cost is high. If the council is considering a permit extension, it should be with strict oversight, clear community protection, regular public review, and performance standards that must be met to continue. We are facing serious concerns. Dangerous dust from blasting and hauling that is affecting our air quality and health. We need a real dust control plan with monitoring enforcement. This is not a construction site. This is a permanent business that needs stricter hours of operation. Right now, there's no clear process for the residents to report violation or seek action when harm occurs. This leaves us vulnerable and without recourse. We are asking for reasonable protections for our family, our property, and our environment. Will you please ask you to act by requiring dust suppression and air quality monitoring, strict truck traffic regulations, and hours of operation, strong environmental and stormwater control, and a public violation reporting process? Our health, safety, and quality of life are at stake. We are counting on you and your leadership. Thank you for your time and your service to this community." I also have pictures, sorry, that I would be happy to email after tonight of just what the road looks like on One Hundred and Eighteenth when you turn off of K thirty-two, of just the storm drains, how dirty the dust is when you're driving down. It's just a cloud of dust. It is not regularly cleaned or street swept. The banks of the trees coming down to the creeks that every time it rains, the water's running over across right in front of the Boy Scout camp entrance. It's just getting worse and worse.
If you want to, you can always email those to, we'll have you email them to the city manager, or would you rather have them go to?
I've already emailed them to Christina, but I would be happy to.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you for bringing information.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yep, Kevin Strathman, one-two-four-three-zero, Kansas Avenue. I appreciate your time. I was going to talk about, you know, the, the lack of blasting limits that are going to come before you in a few weeks. There's no blasting limits. I was going to talk to you about how I believe that the quarry is currently violating their permit by operating after six P M. Heavy machinery. But I do want to focus on the dust because she brought that up. And when you, when you look at the restrictions, they're going to be in the S U P here in a couple of weeks when you get those to look at them. It's going to say that the applicant shall conform to all dust, noise, air, and other environmental regulations applicable and shall conform to the stated method of control and operation contained in the application and the environmental impact study. Okay? And I just got the environmental impact study. I requested it early last week. I just got it at three-thirty today. I do have some copies that I'd like to leave you guys that I've highlighted. But a couple of things that it says, and, and all of that is in their current S U P, okay? And I sent you guys an email, everybody an email documenting the dust. That is not a one-time occasion. That has happened over the years. I guess I've just finally started taking pictures and, and sending it in. But in the environmental impact study that they're supposed to be following today, it does state a couple of things. It says, "Dust problems have always, have also been greatly reduced as a result of the use of new equipment and other dust-reducing measures." And then when you go back later into the dust control measures in the environmental, environmental impact study, it says, "The primary intent of dust control is to prevent excessive levels of suspended particulate from entering the air and spreading off-site." So they are supposed to be following that today. And as you can see, as I documented in the email to everyone, that is not happening today. So they're in violation of the current S U P as well. And so I guess I would like to understand, as you guys review this, how are we going to hold them accountable for not sending dust over onto the neighbors? We have, I mean, I, you know, you power wash, you do whatever, and it's immediately dusty again. And so there either needs to be enforcement of what's currently in here, or some more strict and laid-out regulations, similar to what we're requesting on blasting, similar to what we're requesting on hours of operation, et cetera. So, look, I appreciate all your time. I will leave these behind. And if you haven't read my emails, I would appreciate it if you would take a chance before the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Strathman. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Let's go ahead and leave them over here.
Good evening, mayors, members of the council. I'm Rob Richardson. I live at twenty-one-oh-three Washington Boulevard in Kansas City, Kansas. Mr. Strathman has hired me to help him with this quarry issue. I, I would like to acknowledge that the quarry, since the planning commission meeting, has installed a couple of speed bumps to help with the traffic safety issue. And they've done some other water, stormwater-related items to keep stormwater cleaner, and we thank them for that. But there's still many, many issues with this case, including what Mr. Strathman talked to you about dust and what's in the current environmental impact study. And it says extreme dust. And if you all will either watch the planning commission meeting or read their minutes, one of the ladies at that meeting testified that her children came inside because the dust cloud was so thick, they didn't want to be outside in the dust cloud. I'd say that qualifies as extreme. And so we ask you, we beg you to please do something to help control the dust that's coming off of the site in an extreme way. We also would thank them today. They were going to blast today, and they held off the blast today because the wind, once they were notified by Mr. Strathman, the wind was going to be coming out of the southeast at thirty miles an hour. They said they wouldn't blast. The current stipulations in the, that will come before you say that they would do that on their own in the future. And, but they also said at the neighborhood meeting, if they had set a charge in the morning, and the wind was going to shift, they would either have to cordon off the site and secure the site, or go ahead and set off the blast, and that they would just go ahead and set off the blast because it was easier. We ask that you not let them do that, that they secure the site and wait for conditions to be appropriate for blasting. That's what they said in the neighborhood meeting. They didn't really address that in the planning commission meeting, but we had asked that you would hold them to the requirement that's in the staff report, even if they've set a charge in the morning and conditions change. They should just secure their site. Hopefully, their site's secure anyway. There shouldn't be people playing around the quarry. So I hope, I hope that they could do that without a lot of trouble to them. Something else the environmental impact study says is that the neighbors shouldn't feel vibrations. Like, if you listen to the planning commission testimony or watch that video, you'll see that they are feeling the vibrations. There's testimony by a lady in the planning commission meeting that her basement has been twisted, and she has an engineering statement saying that this is not natural settling. It's caused by vibration coming from off-site. Listen to her testimony about that. It was shocking. I've been doing planning stuff a long time. I've had a lot of people say that, hey, my property values are going to be damaged by this case. I'd never heard anybody with real damages like that before in my career of over thirty years doing planning, including other quarry cases in other cities. It's really bad. And it's, and it's happened because the quarry has moved closer and closer and closer in the last six years. And so people are feeling it more, and the, the impacts are, are closer, so they're being felt. And the damages are, it's been around since the early nineteen hundreds, sure. They've only been within a few hundred feet of these people for the last six years. So there is a difference today versus what it was when the quarry opened a hundred years ago. There's a thousand-foot setback limit in the new proposal to you from the planning commission, and we would ask that you would maintain that for both quarrying activities above and below ground. And that relates to blasting limits. We would ask that you would just hold them to the biggest blast that they did in the last year and the new setback, and the neighbors are comfortable that that should protect them. But then, at the neighborhood meeting, at the planning commission meeting, the quarry representatives at the neighborhood meeting said if, if they did smaller blasts, like say that you've heard us talk about the Olathe limits, if they did that, they would have to do more smaller blasts. We said, that's okay. But then at planning commission, they said, well, those blasts might not work. And then, not quite the same breath, but close, they said, when we're blasting underground, we're going to use smaller blasts because we're underground. We don't want the roof, the ceiling of the rooms we're creating to collapse. So do smaller blasts work, or don't they work? We think they can use smaller blasts like they would be using underground and just use the same blasts above ground. It's all Kansas limestone. It's all going to break up when you put explosives in it. So please hold them to that. I, I would ask that you really pay attention to the planning commission testimony. We had a lot of people there to testify before the planning commission because that was a public hearing. I think they'll be here next week to see what you guys do or the week after. But I would ask that you think about living there, because when people move in, yeah, it's their responsibility to find stuff out. Some of these people have been here a long time. Some of them haven't been here very long at all. But I doubt that a real estate agent is going to show them a house on a day they're blasting and there's dust clouds in the air. That's just not a good way to sell stuff. And so it wasn't really the real estate agent doing anything necessarily wrong. They're trying to sell a house, but I, I don't think that people would perceive what the real impacts are in the normal course of buying a house. And, you know, I could ask for a show many, show of hands, how many people looked at the zoning of your neighbor's property, the master plan of the properties around you, and all that when you bought your home? I did. I'm a planner. So, but not very many people do. And so it's a pretty high standard to ask of those folks. Maybe they should have. But now we have an opportunity to hold them to the standards that they're supposed to have been following all this time and haven't, and to add blasting and setback limits that help protect the neighbors and the community. And, and we just really beg of you to, to take note of those, the testimony from planning commission and our requests over the last month or so on how we think this, these folks can coexist together peacefully in your, in your community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Anyone else?
Hi, Dan Jones with AIPAC. Give me just a second. Mind if I approach the bench real quick?
If you've got materials to distribute, if you go ahead and hand it down this end.
Thank you very much for letting me have a little, little bit of time up here to talk about our special use permit renewal for the, for the quarry. I do want to thank the planning commission. We've worked with them a lot over the last several months. I also appreciate you guys. We had a lot of questions. Last time we were up here in front of you, I believe last month, you guys had a lot of questions about the public concerns and everything. Based on the questions that you guys had, we ended up having a public meeting here at the city hall last month. And we've made a lot of changes to the special use permit and the special conditions. I know we don't have a lot of time, and so I'm going to summarize all of the stuff that we have done, and then I'm going to talk about just a couple of things that I heard from the public comments today, real quick. But a quick summary is, is we changed or updated nine of the existing special conditions based on public comment. And we also added a, another five, five more special conditions. And I, I will be brief as I go through these. But one of the big concerns from the public was, is expansion. Mr. Richardson's talked a lot about expansion. Has, we expanded as we got closer. We have not expanded. We're in the original footprint of the original people that permitted this quarry years and years and years ago, and we have not done any expansion. He talks about as we get closer to the houses, you know, we're blasting more and more. Well, actually, we have reduced the amounts of explosives that we use as we get moved to the north and got closer. And we have data, we've, we've given you guys the data on the blast from reports and showing you the graphs. And so as we get closer to those things, we reduce our blasting to meet the letter of the law. And we are not in violation of any blasting limits or any blasting laws. Let's see, prior, you talked a little bit about the underground mining. We've got this in the permit now, and you guys will get full engineering plans and design plans and all of that stuff for the underground stuff. Stormwater, we heard a little bit about stormwater. We have always had a stormwater protection plan. We work closely with the city, with the stream that comes down through our property. We have revised that plan. Mark added it into the permit. We have revised that plan for the new east pit that's closer to Camp Nash. And we have an engineer, a third-party engineer that does that plan. We do monthly inspections. We do a lot of stuff with stormwater. We heard the citizens, we have removed blasting operations from Saturday. We will no longer do blasting on Saturdays. We don't agree with them on the, the limits they, they're asking from eight to five, and our current timeframe is six to six. Six to six is open for sales and operating heavy equipment. We do do maintenance after six, but we do not sell. We do not blast. We do not mine. We do not crush. We do not do anything, but we do grease our equipment, change oil and stuff, and do maintenance to make sure our equipment is ready to go for the next day after six P M. But we do not, we're not open for sales, and we do no active mining. The crushing equipment does not run after six P M. Never has, never will. Dust control. We talked a lot about dust control, or we've heard a lot about dust control. Mark added dust control methods on rock crushing equipment. Right now, we put about thirty thousand gallons a day of water down onto the roads and where we operate. We have a We have a water truck that operates full-time, so it's filling up out of our pit that's full of water, thirty thousand gallons a day. It's a six thousand gallon machine. As soon as it's empty, we've got a full-time guy on there, goes there, and we do that on all our roads. All of our crushing equipment has spray bars, we've got a, a dedicated trailer, it's got pumps and tanks, we actually add a surfactant to the water, we've had this in process for a long time, and it sprays down on the rock as it's going through the plant to reduce the plant. Most of the dust that they're talking about is either from the truck traffic that comes up there, or is from the actual blast. And I'll, I'll talk about that, but that is why we are subscribing to Weather or Not, which is a local Kansas City, Kansas weather company, and they're providing us with the blast data and the wind data and the temperature inversion data to help us make decisions. So if we got a forty mile an hour wind that is blowing across towards the north, towards the neighbors, we will put off that shot until, until the winds die down. Now, Rob alluded that, you know, because we think it's easier, we're just going to put off the blast anyways. Well, there are some safety concerns. When you have a day like today, when the wind is blowing, but we're out there, there's a condition for severe storms, well, lightning happens in severe weather, right? Lightning can set off a shot that is loaded and cause all sorts of problems. It, it, it ruins the timing, every one of these blasts are specific timing, every hole, you know, there's forty holes, and it's got a millisecond delay. When lightning comes down and strikes, there is no millisecond delay, everything goes off at once. It causes a huge problem. And so, in those times, when there is a concern, yes, we are going to put off that shot, but we are not going to do it because it's easier. So Mr. Richardson is wrong in, in saying that. All right. We'll, we'll get into blasting a little bit more, but we are going to include all of our blast reports in the annual report that we submit to the city in January. Something that I will talk about, if I have enough time, if you guys don't tell me to shut up. But we are, they're requesting that we reduce our blast by half, and then they would be great with our, with our special use permit. If we would drop that level, half of the blasting limit. So we're going to do that voluntarily. We don't want that in our special use permit, because there are things that can happen. There can be a void, there can be a mud seam in the rock, you know, they keep comparing us to Aletha. In Aletha, we have five different twelve-foot layers of rock. And it's not we anymore, because AIPAC doesn't have a place over there. Over here in Bonner Springs, we have a hundred-foot ledge of rock. In Aletha, we have twelve-foot ledges with twelve-foot of shale, and you have to blast all of those separately. So a twelve-foot layer and a hundred-foot layer require different amounts of blasting materials to blast, to put it on the ground and to process that. What we're saying is, what we will do is, so our results that we have shown you and provided you, and it's in this report, I have a graph that's there, whatever, and I've made a little line where the half the limit is. What we're going to do is, we're going to voluntarily do a review. If we get up to that half, we're going to do an internal review, and we will do what we can to reduce the amount of explosives, to change the timing on the explosives, how many holes we drill on the explosives, to keep that at a half. Now, we've shown that within, I mean, you guys have the data from the last ten years, we've been at a third of those blasting limits. And so, what we're saying is, we're going to have an internal process, and we're going to submit that data to you guys. And so, going forward, we have five new ones, so I've, I've done, oh, let's see, they had a question on Sevigny Road, that, the road that goes up through the middle of the quarry that was abandoned, but we've agreed with the planning commission that we'll rededicate that as a public right-of-way, in a public road after we're completed with the quarrying. And we added number eighteen, not be used as a municipal landfill, and something that is not in there, but as you guys know, we talked about last time, we're in the process of purchasing the property. We own the mineral rights, but we're actually in process of purchasing the deed from Waste Management, and when we have that deed, we will dedicate that to no landfilling, put a restriction on there so it can never be landfilled. We will do that. So SUP number twenty, this is a new one. AIPAC will not conduct blasting within a thousand feet of an unknown dwelling. We started off at two hundred feet in the old special use permit. Somebody threw out six hundred feet, we agreed to six hundred feet. At the public meeting, they said a thousand feet, we agreed to the thousand feet. We will not blast within a thousand feet of any unknown dwelling. And when I say unknown, we have places on-site. A dwelling is something that is meant for residents, people living, it can't be your shed, but we will not blast within a thousand feet. And we agreed to that, and Mark's got that in the stipulation. Twenty-one, this is another new one. We will conduct pre-blast surveys on any of the new dwellings, any new things starting at two thousand and four. And you ask, why, why do we not do pre-blast surveys of older locations? You know, it's a pre-blast survey, that's pre-blasting, we've been blasting there for a hundred years. Yes, we have been moving closer and in different directions to those places, but it's a pre-blast survey, this is what you do, the engineering. And I'll just get to it, Mr. Richardson mentioned the lady who has testimony and has emailed you guys multiple times, you know, that her basement is twisting and what have you. She sued us. She sued us, she got the lawyers, she sued us. We had to get engineering, we had to get the insurance companies, we had to get everybody involved. She had engineers, we had engineers, they surveyed the house, they looked at it, they threw it out. There was no evidence, there was no proof that the blasting caused damages. This is public record, you guys can find it. We have been well below the limits for a long time. The engineers would not get up in front of court and say, yes, this is due to blasting. It was due to differential settlement, that's a huge difference. Blasting vibration is back and forth, differential settlement is up and down. You have an old house, it's settling. So, we're not willing to do pre-blast surveys on older homes, we are willing to do pre-blast surveys on any home that is built around us. There's been one that's already built, we're including that in there, we are happy to do those pre-blast surveys, we are happy to provide that stuff, we are very confident that our blasting does not do damage. We have multiple locations across the United States, the blasting industry has thousands and thousands of quarries across the United States that are blasting within two hundred feet of new million-dollar homes, and they are not cracking foundations. They're sticking to the federal guidelines, they are maintaining those federal guidelines, they are blasting within those limits, and they are preventing damage on those homes. We agreed, we talked to Mark, we made sure, we heard a lot of public comment about, well, what are we going to do? You guys are going to pass this special use permit, and there's nothing we can do. It's always been in the UDO that you all can restrict or take away a special use permit. You guys have always had that ability. It is now condition number twenty-two of the special use permit. Stipulation number twenty-three, or condition number twenty-three, a ten-year period. We really would like to have a twenty-year period. Our parent company, if we have a twenty-year permit, like all of the other permits previous to this, they give us, the longer your permit is, based on your reserves, they give us the money to invest in our company, in better equipment, new technology, new dust suppression technology, new fuel-efficient equipment, all of that stuff. And those are, those are all factors, if you guys have been in private industry, those are all factors in how we get capital money from our parent company. We'll agree to the ten-year permit. I'd really like to have a twenty-year permit, but we'll agree to a ten-year one. Additionally, not addressing these special conditions, the young lady that was up here, she came to our, our public meeting, and I had a conversation right over there, and she was crying her eyes out because that day, she was coming, coming down the road, and I can't remember if she told me she had her child in her car with her or not, but a truck pulled out of our quarry and ignored the stop sign, and she had to slam on her brakes to avoid hitting that truck. And so, we've done several things to work on the trucking conditions, which was, in our open public meeting that we had several weeks ago, was, we heard it from more than one person. And so, we've added the speed bumps, there's pictures of there, these are the temporary ones, we have a contract coming with a concrete company, and they're going to put concrete ones all across there, but before you get to our stop sign, you've got to go over two sets of speed bumps. That is going to slow a truck that is loaded up with twenty tons of rock, they're going to have to come to a stop before that stop sign. I talked to, with, with Mark, we've also put a no-left turn lane. There was a ton of comments at the public meeting about the truck traffic going up Hundred Twenty-first Street, past Camp Nash, and driving around up there. I don't know if they're going to other locations, or if those are for local deliveries. I know we donate a lot of rock to Camp Nash, and so trucks do go up there to Camp Nash, but we have put a no-left turn lane up there for the general trucks that, hey, you're not taking a shortcut up to Kansas Avenue and going up this way, you're going to have to go out K-32 and go around and get up there. We have also contacted every trucking company that has been in our quarry for the last five years, and we have told them about the public concerns, about their drivers not stopping at stop signs, not yielding to traffic, about driving too fast on the streets, and we have told them that if we get a specific truck number and a concern, that we will not allow those trucks to come into our quarries anymore. We did a little bit of research on the stopping of the traffic during the blast, we do do that, and that is for a public safety standpoint. We have never had this condition, but they're always with blasting. We've heard all about the complaints from the dust, the dust shoots up in the air when you put up a blast. There is a possibility of rock flying. And so, we stopped the traffic for three to five minutes up on there on Hundred Twenty-first Street, am I right? That's Hundred Twenty-first Street, right?
It turns into Hundred Eighteenth.
And it turns into what?
Hundred Eighteenth.
Turns into Hundred Eighteenth Street. So we stopped that traffic. Now, what we also do is, we notify the neighbors via text when we are going to blast, and so that stoppage is known, prior to hand. So if they're running late, or they've got to get to a meeting, or they've got to be somewhere or whatever, they know those timeframes. And if they're not on that text list, we're happy to put them on that text list. We text, I think, eighteen neighbors right now around us, that we text thirty minutes prior to the blast, five minutes prior to the blast, and then I think like a minute prior to the blast. Not exactly sure, I don't have my production guys with me. So we, we are addressing those things with the, with the public. I want to talk a little bit more about dust. We are heavily regulated by both the EPA and the state of Kansas, and with Wyandotte County, Kansas. We get inspected, we have a limit of twelve percent opacity leaving our property lines. Twelve percent opacity. Well, what does that mean, Dan? Well, a hundred percent opacity is you can't see through it, you can't see your hand in your face, okay? Zero percent opacity is the brightest, clearest day on the planet. We get inspected multiple times a year about the dust coming from our site. Inspectors don't come in, they don't announce that, hey, we're coming, you know, that gives us a chance to throw extra water on the roads, water stockpiles, not put off a shot. You know, they go up the hill and they watch our property, and they watch our crushing operations, and they observe it for thirty minutes, because that's what the timeframe is required for doing dust observations. They watch it, they observe it. Then they come into our site and announce that they're here, and go through our site, and do their inspections. And these are the reports that we send to you guys on an annual basis. We talked about, we heard about the, the drains and the, and the storm sewers on the road. I did, I did hear, thanks for cleaning those out, our superintendent heard about, heard about that stuff at the last meeting, and he has gotten all those drains cleaned out, and he's put those wattles, those protectors out in front of those storm sewer openings, and he will keep maintaining those. Process of reporting, we talked about this with the, with the public, and we gave them a specific phone number to call. That phone number is now on the front board of the quarry, so you don't have to look it up, you don't have to go through Google and White Pages and try to find it, it is right there. And we have a specific process for that, an internal process. You call that number, you log your complaint about whatever it is, that complaint is logged, those records are open to you all for inspection, for who has complained, who has called and complained, and then it will go to the superintendent, it will go to the blasting company, it'll go to vice president of operations, whoever needs to address that stuff. There is a formal process for us. Now, I don't know if the city has one, but there is a formal process for us addressing complaints, and it is documented and logged. I took Mr. Richardson, he gave us a whole set of stipulations that he would like to have, that he has gotten consensus with the general public. And this is in the middle of the packet that I sent you, and I've highlighted our answers. I think ninety-nine percent of that stuff, we have agreed to and addressed in the existing special conditions, or that are actually in our internal written policies that we're required to have for our parent company, for the EPA, for the Department of Natural Resources, all of that stuff is answered in there for you guys. I tried to put some pictures, I put in the contract with the weather service that we have contracted with, I put in some pictures of the, of the controls that we put in there, and then I put in a picture of the seismic graph data from last year, where you guys can see, if you really look at that graph, where we're the very last page, we're in that lower third, and then you can see the yellow line where they proposed, you know, to set our blasting limit at, and where we are putting in as our internal review for us, if we get to that blasting limit, or we get to that self-imposed line, that we will start looking at what we can do, reducing the timing, reducing the amount of powder in the shot. There's, there's multiple different things that, that you can do, that we currently do to stay in this lower third of the blasting stuff that we currently do. So, and that is the last, last page on there. I want to thank everybody, I want to thank the planning department, I think I've worked with Mark, I've been doing this job for this company for twenty-five years, and I don't think I've spent more time with any planning director than I have over the last five months with Mark. And I think that we have done a really good job of listening to the interests of the public, of the planning commission, and of the city council members to be a good to be a good neighbor. We're owned by CRH. We're a publicly traded company. We have to do a sustainability and environmental report for the company every single year. If we are not a good corporate citizen for our neighbors, for our new neighbors, for existing operations, be it an existing operation that's been here for 100 years or a brand-new operation that we are starting there, if we are not a good corporate citizen, we're out of business. And so we plan to continue being a good citizen, a good partner with this community, and to do the right things with the surrounding community. Unless you have any questions, that's all I got. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Actually, I would, since this is going to be in front of us in two weeks, I would suggest recording your questions.
This was a specific person that called me today. It's not really about the
Okay.
stuff we're going to go over. But on the reporting for the meters, they're supposed to get those monthly and if a homeowner's not getting those, how do they, who do they contact to get those? They said they hadn't received one yet this year.
Typically, those are just sent to the city on an annual basis. If a homeowner is requesting that specifically from us, the blast reports on the blast, then alls they have to do is get ahold of that number that we gave them and we can provide that blast report. We can put them on a list of blast reports. I guess I skipped over that one in, in all my reading, but we did, we are also agreeing to put seismographs in people's yards, you know, to do a specific test. It might not be a permanent one where they have it for the next 10 years or whatever. But we already have five seismographs out there that we're monitoring stuff. We're getting ready to add a sixth one out there. And we have portables that we put on people's properties at different times all the time. And so we can, we can provide those.
Oh, it just says that it'll provide monthly reports to the owners by regular mail. That's what I
That, that was one of the requests and we can, we're happy to meet that request.
Oh, that was just a request.
Yeah, that, that is not in the special conditions. That was in one of Mr. Richardson's requests that homeowners get that. And our thought is we're providing all our data to the city. We'll give it to the city and you guys can disseminate it. If we get a homeowner that calls us specifically, we'll provide it to them.
I understand. Thank you.
Happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council?
Hi, Jenny Straffman, 12430 Kansas Avenue. I didn't realize that I was going to be speaking, but I just had a couple of things. So first of all, I just want to say, we really want this to be a symbiotic relationship. You know, we want big businesses, we want businesses in our community, they help. But we also want to be a community that is looking out for our people. And so when I, when I hear him talk, you know, I'm a mother and I'm one of the mothers that had to bring their kids in because of the dust. And so we just have to figure out how this works because I know we're hearing what you're saying and you're hearing what we're saying and somehow we have to be able to come together. And I'm hearing some of these things of, you know, we'll watch the wind. Well, really it's us watching the wind. So when we get his texts of we're going to blast, we actually have to, you know, screenshot the weather report and say, you know, the wind's coming from the south at 45 miles per hour, are you still going to shoot? And like that day, they did. Today, we had to send another one. You know, winds are coming from the south at 30 miles an hour, are you still going to shoot? Today, they canceled it. But I think that was partly because of this meeting tonight. And so I just want to ask that you really understand that we agree that they, they are doing things and trying, but we want to make sure that we have things written down and we have the parameters there. Because while, while we appreciate their, their efforts, we just want to make sure that, you know, there is some kind of governance that is watching our people and making sure that we're not being taken advantage of. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Straffman. Anyone else wish to address the council? Seeing none, then we will go ahead and move on with the next part of our agenda this evening, which would be the approval of tonight's consent agenda, the, yes, consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the April 14th, 2025 city council meeting, minutes of the April 21st special city council meeting, and then claims for city operations. Is there anything that staff wishes to have hold? Any of our residents wish to have hold? Counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as it is presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. Roll call, please.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, that takes us on to new business. 138th Street project, change order number one. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, counsel. Matt Beetz, public works director. This change order is what I alluded to a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting of a issue we had to come up on the 138th Street project where we had incorrectly or missed, we had missed in the review process the plans of what we were doing with a high-pressure water line that feeds the Cedar Springs development. This change order basically is putting that service line back in, in, or putting in a new high-pressure line that feeds that development since the old one has to come out right now because of, of its current location and conflicts with the storm sewer or storm drainage system. There is funds through, left in the unallocated budget for, the census project came in under, quite a ways under budget. There is money still left in there for this. So we're making a recommendation to approve it and I can answer any questions I can.
Any additional comments from staff? Is there anyone from the public wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve change order number one with VF Anderson Builders LLC in the amount of $28,840.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Reeves. We'll start down there with you, Mr. Shannon. Any comments, questions?
These aren't fun, are they, Matt? No, many, but thanks. No problem.
Mr. Kip?
No questions. Nothing. No questions.
Just one, Matt, for clarification, what makes the difference with, I understand it's more pressure, yes, but you put in a different kind of line, a different kind of pipe for that high pressure or?
Well, it's on a different side of our system, so to speak. Right at the intersection of 138th and Morris, there's a vault there that has our pressure reducing valve. So from the booster station up behind the cemetery, we pressurize the water system going out that direction to help push more water up in, in the higher elevations, especially like, in this case, it'd be like those three-story tall units. If we tried to take it off, the plans actually show it tying the line on Grove over to the west side of 138th Street and into the low-pressure side of that system. And we closed the high-pressure valve, basically taking the whole development out of the high-pressure side, opened up the water from the low-pressure side to it and then put some gauges on it. And as you, I think our numbers were like 37 PSI or something. That was at a fire hydrant at ground level. So three stories up, it's going to be even less than that. So yeah, this would basically, there's a, it'll essentially be like parallel lines would be, the low-pressure line will be running down the west side. And between Morris and Grove, on the east side, there'll be a high-pressure line that runs down. And there's one there currently right now.
Okay, I guess I didn't understand that was two separate lines.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm just glad you caught it and conscientious and founded for the people at, on the third story of one of the Cedar Ridge buildings.
We probably got a call about that one.
So there's no other comments, questions? I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
On to item number two, Second Street Waterline Construction Inspection Services, supplemental agreement number two.
So this one is a little more difficult to explain. When the contractor, when the engineer put together their scope for the inspection services for the Second Street Waterline, they basically look at it and look at like what similar-sized projects other places obviously have taken in time and they kind of base their number off of that. In this case, let's say, I think they were like 60 days of what they expected, 60 working The contract actually reads, I think it was 120 working days. Don't quote me on that exactly off the top of my head now. We do that for one reason, if you, if you make it too small, too tight of a window for the contractor and you say, you know, hey, you got to have this done in 60 working days, you tend not to get as many bids and as budget-friendly bids, let's say, because the contractor's looking at, going, I may have to put all my staff onto this one here and I've got six other projects I'm trying to deal with. So, hey, I can spread my stuff, my crews out to do, you know, this project along with other ones. But what we've kind of run into is where this contractor right now is, is kind of slowed way down on us. Unfortunately, he's gone past the allotted days that we had for our inspection, our inspector, but he is still with inside, within the contract parameters. So right now, our inspector is, is running out of time on his contract and we're still trying to get the water main in and we still have to come back and then hook all the services to it. So we pull, we found some places in our budget that we could pull money from to help pay for this additional time. We're working with the engineer. He's trying to share time across from the sidewalk project and whenever we need to have an inspector on the Second Street Waterline project, then he'll come over and, and work on that line or inspect that. Since it's a waterline project, we have to have somebody out there whenever they're putting a line in the ground. So if they're dig, they're tearing up concrete, digging a hole, we don't need to watch that. We just need to watch them put the line in. And then likewise, we'll need to watch them when they do all the services too. The other option that we're looking at is once the waterline is in place, allocating one of our utility staff members to go back and do all the inspection for all the service connections. That's something our guys do all the time. We're qualified to do that. So there's not a real big concern for us to do that part of it. That'll help take time, you know, save us money basically off the budget. I hope I can make that clear. It is a little more confusing on this one, but that's what happened in a nutshell.
Any additional input from staff? Is there anyone from, any of our citizens wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve supplemental agreement number two for construction inspection services on the Second Street Waterline Improvement Project with Wilson and Company in the amount of $67,500.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Gurley, a second by Ms. Wood, and we'll start with you, Mr. Reeves.
The way I understand this, we may not have to spend that much money if we're lucky.
Yeah, you're right. If we don't, I mean, we spend, you know, say $15,000 more, $20,000 more, the remainder of that will go back into, back into our budget. We don't want to spend it. So, and if we use our staff for some of that time, that'll help.
Proud of along. Thank you.
Try and.
Ms. Long?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Ms. Wood?
No questions.
Ms. Gurley?
So this is giving us approximately another 65 days of inspection. Is that math good? $90 an hour and $67,000?
Yeah, I think that's right.
Something like that?
Yeah. This would actually, so the number here would actually cover them going all the way through however many days the contractor has left.
Okay.
So I don't have to do this again.
Right. Okay, thank you.
No questions.
So do we have a timeline now for that completion on that project? Because I know originally we were talking about
See, into July. I don't have exact, I mean, I can tell you when the contract runs out and it's into July, but they're still on the way down, they're getting closer to Front Street on Second right now.
Got you.
And all they've got to do is turn the corner and go down to Oak.
And we have to wait for that waterline to be in before they can actually start working on the sidewalk, I assume? Because sidewalk's going to be on that south side, isn't it as well?
The sidewalk, that waterline, I'm sorry, the sidewalk project is outside the curb and the waterline is actually in the road, so.
I know there's fire hydrants. They come, they aren't in the road.
They're already in.
But they have to connect into that waterline.
Yeah, and there, that portion of the waterline's already in.
Okay.
So that's further down to the west.
Got you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, I'd go ahead and call for the vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Beetz. Onto our third item, Humane Society Contract. Staff?
Good evening, Heather Pate, Police Department. And tonight before you, we have the contract proposal for the Humane Society of Greater Kansas City. Last council meeting, we talked about the contract that we agreed to with Great Plains and the price increase that we saw with that contract. So we started trying to find other options for the city to save some of that increase. And we actually have come out with a better deal than the original contract with the Great Plains, with the Humane Society, with transfers being at $250 per transfer regardless of the size of the dog, which is about a $400 savings for large breeds. So it should keep our budget within our current parameters with the savings. That's all I've got for you.
Any additional things from staff? Anyone from residents wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Humane Society of Greater Kansas City for animal-related services.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Kip, and we'll go ahead and start with you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for your work with us because the animals are so important and we know as we go through the city and see them. So thank you.
Has the Great Plains contract been executed or is there any contract breakage involved with that?
No, so we're allowed to have contracts with both agencies, so should one not be able to accept an animal, we can use Great Plains as a backup.
We don't have to designate a primary, we can just choose where we take them.
Correct.
Great, thanks.
No questions. Thanks for finding that good solution. Appreciate it.
Good job, Heather. Thank you.
Ms. Long?
No questions. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thumbs up. Thank you.
Thanks, Captain Pate. Speaking of that, we, we, we found a forever home animal this last week from Humane Society, so I haven't even got babysitters lined up.
Bring it on.
If there's no other comments or questions, I would go ahead and ask for the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Captain Pate. Onto item number four, we have an executive session to discuss a development agreement pursuant to the exception for consultation with an attorney. So who would like to make that motion?
Do I get to do this? How much time would we like?
20 minutes. I think it's on there.
20 minutes. We'd never get out of there in 20 minutes. Make a motion to go into, I will make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the exception for consultation with an attorney, KSA 75-4319B2. The open meeting will resume in council chambers at 9:57.
8:57.
8:57, thank you. To be calculating the minute hand.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Ms. Gurley and a second by Ms. Long. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We'll see you in 20 minutes, everyone. I'll see you in 20 minutes, everyone. You were right, Mark. Okay, I would accept a motion to resume.
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, so moved.
Yeah, specify the time. You got to add with no action, you got to read, read people. So read that motion again, Mr. Reeves.
Make a motion that we can resume our regular meeting at 8:58.
With no action taken.
No action taken.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Shannon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that'll move us on to reports, so we'll start out with the city manager's report.
Staff has been working with Waste Management to plan out the next couple of months as we transition to the new contract. We put the postcards together, and those should be mailed out to every service address on residential service. The first or second week of May, carts should be delivered between the 12th and the 20th. We're looking at, I believe, May 22nd to have an open house, and we'll make sure that that's posted on the postcard. We'll also have some additional events. I know that they're looking at either evenings on Oak or farmers' markets, as well as some other community or school events that they can, or we can, take information to and answer any questions. Speaking of that, it is event season, there are a lot of events going on, there's a few in the city manager's report, it's a lot around town. And then each of you will find on your desks, this special meeting goals and priorities, this is what I typed up based on our, on our meeting from last week with the department heads. Everything that I had taken notes on, you'll find on this sheet, as well as a couple more that have been, have come up over the year. So the first page is just general priorities of what you'd like to see city staff focusing on, and then we have some possible budget requests and some long-term budget concerns. So if you'll take those and rank them, first being the most important to you, and it kind of varies how many items there are, but the, the highest number is the least priority for you. And then there's also an area for comments and suggestions on each piece of it, but I'm happy to meet with any of you all or answer any questions, if anyone has any. If you could have these back to me by the next council meeting, that would be wonderful, so that we can use them on our budgeting. That's all I have.
Should mention note wise that, no, you can't put one for everything.
That is true. If you could please just have one of each number in each second section.
Can I have an eraser?
Okay, that takes us on to council.
Amber, I had a question, Mr. Mayor. Amber, on the postcards, could we get a copy of those before they're mailed out, so that we at least have an idea? Because I've had a couple people ask me about the cards, you know, and stuff, and I'd like to be able to support what we're
Yep, when Chris gets the final draft from Waste Management, she'll email it out to you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, we'll start with council items, I'll start with you, Ms. Long.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Mr. Reeves?
Nothing here, thank you, good to be here.
Ms. Woods?
Do we have to get it before, oh, do we have to get it before the next council meeting, or can we just hand it to you at the next council meeting?
You can hand it to me there. I made it the next one to be easy on you guys, so you wouldn't have to make a special trip.
Do you have anything else for general council items?
No, thank you.
Nothing for me?
Nothing, nothing, thank you.
And that brings it on to me, I'll keep it real simple and short, just real quickly, I did get an opportunity to, and it was my pleasure, to introduce Amber to, to the UG Commission last week, went down and spoke, and gave her an opportunity to speak as well, as well as introducing her, so. Fortunately, I got it wrong, she hasn't been here 10 years, she's only, you'd have to go watch the meeting to fully understand that one. Secondly, you know, in conjunction with the, the SUP that the individual spoke on this after, by the, early at the beginning of the meeting, if you have not, the planning commission meeting was uploaded, so if, onto YouTube, the YouTube channel, so if you have not had a chance to view it, I would encourage everyone to watch that meeting, so you can kind of hear all of the arguments that, that took place during the public comment portion. So if there's nothing else, for me, I would go ahead and accept a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Ms. Gurley, and a second by Mr. Kip, correct?
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? We're adjourned. Get out of here, everyone.